Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Groupie.
Here.
Council President Kitzler.
Here. All right, we'll move on to council review of discussion of 2020, 2024 capital improvements program and 2020 capital borrowing. So we are going to wait to provide Mark the opportunity to give us an overview until Mayor O'Connor is back. So everyone sees their schedule before them and I apologize, I'm gonna kind of keep us on time. I don't mean to mitigate any questions or discussion or different things like that, but I know we have a council meeting at seven, so. So we will start. Mark, if you just have quick opening comments and then we'll pass it on to Diane.
Just, yeah, there is, you know, page two, what the people, the wood products, on page two is the changes made from the previous capital budgets. The goal was moving to a policy next year. When Mary wanted to borrow between two and 2.5 million. So, you know, given down there, so some fund down, so it's 2.5 million dollars. So, there is changes to 2020 community budgets. And so, so if you, page two is where the changes were made. No questions? You know, Mary is not here to answer, why she's kind of giving you an idea of how to answer this.
I do have a question for you.
Go ahead, Alder Wood.
Mark, there are a number of the items this year and in the future years where it says move to operating budget and then on the second, for the future years, it's the comment is operating expense.
No, I meant, yeah.
Well, that's not my guess, my question is, is this, are we, do we think that we shouldn't have been using capital for these items or is it been part of the effort to reduce the overall borrowing or?
It's kind of a combination of both. Some of these ones, we kind of dig into a little bit more, maybe assume that these are probably more operating related expenses. Some of it was just trying to reduce the problems, see if there's a way to incorporate daily activities, do it there, especially the jigs of management plans. But it was a combination of both.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alder Thomas?
Because we have, I'll take it up at another time to say, no, we don't have time, but I have real concerns about moving that stuff to the operating and whether we're going to be on a yo-yo because two years down the road, if the operating's going to get tight because the insurance goes up. And I think we need to have a conversation about that. Because that really limits what we can do with operating.
Sure.
In terms of raises or adding stuff or increasing services.
Are you guys eating pizza?
Yes.
So, I think we can take it up at another time, but.
We can talk about that to you in the end.
Whenever, I'd like, I think we need to take it up because I think it's a policy shift that we need to think about and what the impact is long run and what percentage we're going up and what the state legislature is allowing us to go up.
Sure.
Okay? Because it does affect higher hands a little bit in terms of what we can do, add services, whether it's senior EMS, fire, police recreation.
Any other questions there?
I have one, one last request is because there are so many changes to the committee budgets, I would appreciate getting a packet of all the, the narrative descriptions that the committees got of the items that were taken out.
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
We're already behind schedule.
All right.
Page number, 118. So the one item that the senior center has for the 2020 capital is a replacement copy machine. Our current machine is purchased in 2013. It's so out of date, we do not carry a maintenance plan on it because they don't have parts and we're starting to put in money for repairs. So, we've actually proposed, as recommended by the committee, that we get a color copyer. We, I had originally proposed about black and white, but we do a lot of colored flyers and items like that that our seniors like to read. So we're proposing a color copying machine, which is actually, we got a really great deal through Gordon Flush where we really do have to increase our requests a whole lot for, so for this machine. Where it will affect us is our operating will have to go up a little bit because we'll have to pay per page for the color copiers, but not more than five hundred copies.
So are we, I'm sorry, are we buying this or leasing?
We're proposing purchasing.
Purchase?
The machine, yeah.
Okay. And it's thirty-five hundred, twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, that's amazing. That quote's amazing, yeah.
Additional questions? Would we be responsible for the maintenance, I'm guessing, since we're purchasing?
Yeah, so the maintenance agreement would be about twenty dollars per month.
Oh.
So I put that in my operating budget.
Oh. Alder Thomas?
Can we take, I know that the senior center prints flyers and does stuff for the friends. Do we charge them for that and if we don't, can we start so they can pay part of the operating to lower?
Because we don't have a color copyer, we have them done at City Hall and they do pay City Hall for those copies, but this way they do pay the senior.
So, but when the senior center gets their own?
Yep, then they can do it that way.
So then you can offset some of the cost by charging them?
Right.
The friends?
Yep.
And I think that we have the funds that we can, because it's cheaper than getting them printed in, in secret or something, so.
Yeah.
So I think you could put that in as a revenue in our operating budget for, for the color copiers.
Right.
I mean, that's my thought, I mean, anyway.
Although, we will not have color copies open to the public, a lot of our seniors will come and make copies, but we want to program this so that only with the staff code can use the color copies.
Alder Wood?
Just on the couple of items that were taken out in the 2020 is the sustainability products and it's noted that to use the senior center donation fund balance. Is that the friends or what, is that something else?
No.
That was Mary's recommendation.
Yeah, so basically we looked at some of the items, there's, we'll sit above the items for less than a hundred block speech and stuff like that. And the thought was they could be replaced ongoing when needed, if there was a high demand to replace it right away. And also the senior center has, does have a donation fund balance, about forty-six. Looking at today, it's like forty-seven thousand dollars. So then come on over there, that's the thought.
And that's separate from the friends?
Yes.
Okay. And then 2021, you had proposed a touchscreen mobile scanner that was being moved to operating expense. Mark, can you?
Yeah, so we're going to look at probably the list of events over the IT budgets and see how that, look at there and kind of incorporate it all together at one time. So it actually might be part of the capital actually, maybe the IT budgets, but we just kind of look at everything kind of one big, under one control.
Right, yeah. So how much is, how long rather, does something need to last to be proper to use capital for?
It varies based on the items, you know, at least to have at least five years of some of that.
Okay.
Additional questions? All right. Thank you, Diane. Let's pause real quick, grab pizza and then we'll start back up.
Please.
Oh. All right, never mind, let's, we'll keep going. She sold them. Fire protection and EMS.
Page thirty-eight is fire protection. So the budget's for fire, a lot of them were removed or moved to the operating budget we had, so we didn't have a ton to start off with, but they moved, the only one in the capital budget now is our personal protective equipment, that's our fire button here, our terminal here, so. I don't know if there's any questions on it.
That's the end of the question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, well, in 2020, you had also requested for fire, TIC.
Thermal imaging camera. So, and that got moved over to the operating budget.
So in the operating budget, you saw there's fire equipment component, it has like six thousand dollars, so that's part of it, we assume they're just kind of absorbing it to there.
So we won't be adding any to the operating budget for that?
Not right now.
Because that wasn't, the thermal imaging camera is something that we buy every, probably ten years. So, in my opinion, it is not an operating, we go on and it's not purchased on a regular basis.
And then, okay, thanks. And then you also had requested an L3 camera that was removed completely, apparently.
That was the latter, that's ladder three, the, the 3D camera, it gives a camera, there's cameras on each side of the. So, there's a camera on the front, one on each side, one in the rear. So the screen that's in the vehicle gives you a 360 degree picture when you're backing, when you turn the passenger side blinker on, the camera comes up with a, has a picture of the side of the vehicle, so you can see if anybody's in the blind spot. Same thing with the driver's side, so. The, that camera, I'm understanding that we're trying to keep the budget as low as possible for hopefully the purpose of working towards a public safety building, so I'm willing to, okay, but it's, it's removed completely, you'll see it again.
Okay.
But it's not something that has to happen this year.
Do we have that on any of the other engines already?
We have it on our current and our brand new ambulance and we're scheduling it for the new engine currently. We have it on the budgets this year for the new engine.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions on fire? Seeing none, we'll move on to EMS.
Page starts on page forty. So there is, you'll notice there is three items, we're splitting a bunch of budget diagrams, removed EMS. Other one, we can use the fund balance, that process is there. On the fund balance is roughly a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred forty-five, a hundred fifty thousand. And the new rates going up, so depending where that comes in, so we thought we'd use some of the fund balance up to take for some desires up there.
So they, the COP and the Lucas batteries, those are for the, well, they got, they got moved over to.
Perfect fund bank.
The fund balance, okay, yep. Those are for the COP and our CPR machine. Tires, the tires and EMS bags are our EMS bags. The new defibrillator, defibrillator gets used on almost every call. We're able to do twelve lead KGs, transmit them directly to the hospital. Our paramedics can call a STEMI in the field, basically heart tech in the field, and they will bypass the emergency room and go right up to the cardiac catheter because of this technology. Just as with any computer, a two or three-year-old piece of computer is somewhat obsolete. All of the blood rhythms are, that's how they determine, the wavelengths and the waves, this QRS complex, is that type of stuff, for cardiac rhythms. And the newer equipment provides a better view of it, so we call the STEMI cell a lot quicker.
Questions for EMS?
Yeah, are we expecting to use any of the EMS fund balance for, in the operating budget this year?
Currently, no. So, I'm kind of looking at his numbers, haven't seen so far, especially if the new rates improve and I do not see that he's using any.
Additional questions? All right, thanks, Drew.
Start with the parks. The Parks and Recreation Board.
Page one oh two.
On page one oh two, our top priority project is the Stonebridge Park design. So we are still working through the final conceptual plan for improvements at Stonebridge Park and as you may recall, that included some storm water treatment, so some RSC devices that will gain us some credits in our phosphorus reduction through our storm water permit. And then the other goal would be improving access to the water from the road. And so we will continue to get that final conceptual design done and then work with our engineers to go through design in 2020 with the hopes of bidding it out in 2021. And this would be a project that we would be applying for some stewardship funding through Wisconsin DNR.
Because next year it's, what, five hundred thousand?
Correct. We're anticipating construction that includes both components of park and storm water to be close to a half million, but as we finalize those conceptual plans, we'll have a much better opinion of probable cost.
Do you have a boss mark, how much do you expect funds would I ask for?
Two hundred and forty-seven thousand, less than two fifty. We actually just had a regional networking meeting on Friday and invited the grant specialist from Wisconsin DNR to attend and she noted there was a lot of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar applications this year.
Jake, is it, sorry, is it also correct that there's a possibility for some, you know, a wins grant through Dane County for the storm water treatment?
Correct. Yep, the storm water, I think it's about half and half what the cost for the storm water portion of the project and the parks project would be and so the, I believe, up to seventy-five percent, Dan Stefani at next week can speak to that, would be eligible for storm water grants.
It's in reach sixty-four.
Correct. It's in reach sixty-four. The second project we have is making improvements at Woodland Park and so in your packet, I believe in the narrative, it shows a conceptual plan for Woodland Park. This would be bringing a parking lot in off the Femrite Drive access. Right now, currently our trailhead that we have goes through the Tularean parking lot and so this project would include providing some city parking to the park, re-navigating some of the trails to keep them all on the park property. And it also includes a sizable, up to seventy-five thousand dollar donation from the John Trafer family to do this project. So as you know, John and Peggy are longtime stewards of the park, volunteers, working capital and financing and as they're nearing kind of the end of their volunteering, I think of the park, they would like to see this project.
And I think important to note here is they're going to do it this year or they're not going to do it at all?
That's correct. The next project, this is one that was reduced by the mayor, was have a placeholder to start working on some of our parks that were damaged during the flooding. This restoration could include additional engineering work to look at, with the feasibility of shoreline improvements or actual shoreline improvements or contracting out for just turf restoration. So, the four that I have listed, Birch Haven, Winnicott, which would be the West Side, Graham and Tecumseh were the ones that received the most amount of damage from the flooding. And it's due to the late winter, very wet spring. We didn't get a chance to really do any of our own in-house, at least turf restoration on these areas. We wanted to kind of see what was going to come up, what wasn't. So this lining item would include some shoreline. Potentially, we'd be looking at shoreline improvements that were similar to what we did at Cold Springs where we would do some stuff retaining walls on the help of the shoreline and screws up those smaller parks.
So, question, you've got four parks listed there and it's ten thousand dollars, that doesn't seem like it's going to go very far.
No, ideally, if it's, at the bare minimum, we would do just turf restoration. So we would be, you know, regrading the parts that were damaged and then reseeding and that, and if we can do it ourselves, we shouldn't have to spend a whole lot. If we have to contract it out, it might be, you know, close to twenty-five hundred dollars per, you know, per park.
There's two thoughts on this one too. Right now, we're still working with the FEMA, so it might be some of the FEMA coming, money coming for, so they basically, it's going to attach with FEMA. We should be getting some money for shoreline, but we don't know how much and it might be on them and coming back and what, they pay seventy-five percent. So when that is numbered, it might be adjusted once we figure what FEMA's all going to pay for it. Some stuff they said no, some stuff they said they will. We'll have to do that within the next six months here, we just got an extension to finish it off.
I thought FEMA paid after you do, do the repair, do the work.
Right, so we, they approved a certain areas, they're doing the work in certain areas. So we have six months, once we get the extension to do it, so. Part of it, and also is, I think, the mayor kind of wanted to focus on maybe one or two parks until we kind of got a good plan for your business and not having a plan right away.
True, but it'll be two years, even with this budget, it'll be two years since the flooding.
Sure.
The next project is a Huska Park tennis court parking lot light project. So this is just in the area between the shelter and the tennis court, so we have six parking lot lights, multiple heads of those lights are missing, they don't make direct replacements anymore. And so we don't have bulbs that fit and so it's kind of a dark spot in the area. So this would be to replace those parking lot heads and poles. And also to do some additional work on the tennis court lights themselves. We have one bank that had wires pulled through, so it's a little bit of a larger project to do the repair on and then let our own operating budget is just replacing bulbs and transformers typically, you know, on any given year, we'll, we'll pay between two and three thousand dollars for light replacements at Huska between the baseball and the football and the tennis lighting. But this one has a little bit more work to be done with it, so we wrap it up with one project. Next one, bike rack benches, trash cans, this is an annual operating line item. We did bump it up slightly to be able to add some additional bike parking at the community center. Between the programs that we have and the amount of visitors come in front of the building, we certainly have seen a lack of available bike parking. So this would create a parking pad and probably almost a little, what we would call a transition seating area, similar to what we did out by the sidewalk where we'd have some table and a place for parents and people using the community center to meet. Park tree removal replacement, that is increased this year a little bit from last year. We'll be having a more detailed list of anticipated tree removals for next year due to the Emerald Dash Four, but it's significant in the change from last year to this year in the health of the trees is quite noticeable in the park system, so most of this money will be for removals. There's not going to be a lot of replacements next year, enough that we'll still maintain our tree city USA, but I anticipate, you know, the average mature ash removal is between thirteen hundred and eighteen hundred dollars for removal. So, we've got some big ones that will have to come down. We've also encountered some old wilt this year, most notably Arrowhead Park will have a tube there and I've seen it around the community, so there may be some treatment options as part of this project as well for some of our more mature old trees. And the last one is.
I have a question on that, on the trees. So you're saying all the twenty-five thousand is going to go towards removals?
Probably, close to it, I mean, I'll keep, I'll probably keep five for replanting, but that'll, I mean, that'll be our smaller diameter trees. If we do the larger diameter, three inch to four inch caliper, those are about a thousand dollars a piece, whereas if we direct purchase our, the smaller one and a half to two inch caliper, we're looking anywhere from two to three hundred dollars a piece. So, we'll have some, the challenge is, we're going to have to address the kind of the biggest safety factor trees for removal. With the replacements, comes a whole other side. If we plant too many in a year, we have a hard time maintaining those new trees, so we have to try to space out the amount that we've replanted and where we replant them so we can get the watering and mulching in those first years. So, I'll probably take down more than I planted these this year and then as we cash up, those will replant heavy in another year. But this year I anticipate as many of them that we can do with our own staff, and that takes time away from the replanting cycle.
So do you have an estimate between our staff and outside, what the, how many ash trees or trees period will be taken down?
Not yet. I'll give you one, we're actually working on parking them this week.
If we could have that for sure by the time we're.
Sure, absolutely.
Considering, you know, voting on the capital.
Absolutely. And then the last one in the parks is sign replacements. So third time's a charm in the capital budget to replace some of our old park signs to the newer style. This would be Frostwoods Beach, Maywood and Frostwoods Park. That would completely, Winnicott Road, kind of right off Winnicott Road, parks that would all.
Any questions for parks?
Well, yeah. Since there are so many, I mean, I don't know, we, we want to talk about the cotton supply too.
Yeah.
Sure, a lot of them. I guess one, one in particular that I'm trying to figure out is the Healy Lane parking lot, looks, is that completely gone from the?
For now, and then probably should be one Mary kind of comments on the removal. But it is removed, yes.
Her comment to me when we were kind of reviewing, my running this meeting was, she wants to see a comprehensive plan for the whole Winnicott Park before piecemealing it together and making sure that it's more of a holistic approach, but.
Okay.
The other line items that were removed, the only one that I would ask as far as reconsideration would be the electric vehicle. Given what we are working with, with our staff and the programs in the summertime and looking at off-site transportation and moving supplies and people to especially riverfront, the original second-hand one that we purchased is quite unreliable. It's in for repairs. The brand new one we have is great, works wonderful, but we will be, I think, short vehicles for this upcoming year. So, the other ones we can manage without for this year, but I do, would ask that we consider that, that particular line item.
Just following up on that, I had a question on the, maybe this is more from our, the Frostwoods management plan and Woodland Park, management plan being moved to operating? These are basically, at this point, we're implementing the plan, is that right?
It's basically, the Frostwoods, I don't think we ever seen an actual plan. Basically, no, just basically it's kind of a lot, it's just our crew going in there and kind of doing the work, it's not like we're hiring anybody. So it's really just part of it, we looked at it as a, it's an operating expense, it's not anything really capital, it should be considered an operating expense, it shouldn't be a capital expense because it's just maintenance and crew going in there cleaning up, doing the work, so it would be hired somebody to do a plan, you know, hiring a large adult company to do it. So that's always kind of a thought process and that's why we kind of dug into to see if that's really capital.
For both of them?
Yeah. And for the future years.
And then, the riverfront art, RFQ being, looks like delayed until 2021.
Oh, Mary, do you need a minute on this one? Yeah, I don't know if we talked about it a little bit too, seeing how the use of the park kind of flows and then if there's any changes and thoughts about what type of art or how we'd go about drafting an RFQ for the art piece. The one anecdote that I'll add, I know Dane County provides some sort of grants too, so one aspect to look at is working with them to provide the grant for the RFQ process and then figuring out a way to either cost share or fund raise for the actual art piece was another discussion item.
Okay, but if we don't have an item in the budget for the RFQ, then how is staff going to know that it's okay for them? that it's okay for them to go to Dane County to get, to seek funding for it? I guess my concern is the park will have been open, you know. If we wait till 2021 to even do the RFQ, I assume that nothing's going to happen until 2022 and the park will have been open for, you know, over two years by that point.
True. Yeah, I just think we just want to move it, but Andrew said to see where that park's going to be there. Because right now, it's still, we don't even know, you know, Jake hasn't planned, but we don't know exactly what's going to happen at that park. Maybe get a year and see what happens.
I mean, worst case, if the council, the council would want us to pursue at least going through the process of the Dane County Arts Grant, you know, we could do that. And if it looks like we would be successful in securing that grant, then I guess we could come back for a capital budget amendment if there's some sort of matching requirement for it.
Right. Okay.
I would hope if it's an arts piece that we could get not only a Dane County grant, but get an underwriter for an arts project. I mean, given that things are tight and we have some potentially looming higher ticket items, even though my daughter is an art curator and I think arts and parks are wonderful things, that those are the things that we should be able to find a sponsor for.
Additional comments, questions about the park?
You're speaking about the actual, we're going to get to the installation piece, not the RFQ piece.
I'm talking about the whole project. I mean, if you look at, for example, the White Horse Project that was just done down on, across from the field house. The majority of that was not paid for with taxpayer dollars, but rather was either arts funding or business funding.
Right.
And I would hope that, and the same thing with the White Horse Project that was, when they cast up on the hill overlooking the lake, that was, and most public art is funded with donations and contributions.
Any additional comments? All right, move on to, which one do you want to do next? Community Center?
Sure. We have Community Center...
Page, sorry.
Oh, sorry, page 115. The two projects we have scheduled for this next year is Building Security is our top-rated project. With the change in kind of use, especially in our level, with the children's programs, having more secure entrances is needed in the opinion of our staff and committee. We have currently, right now, 43 kids in our after-school program. Works of 40 kids in the summer, full days that are in and out of the community center. Transitioning kids from activity room, whether it be the lounge or main hall, to the bathrooms and getting drinks of water can sometimes lead to interactions with the general public. On occasion, we do have visitors that aren't necessarily in the building for a specific purpose and that causes some alarm between our staff and myself over potential tensions or anything like that. So this project would allow for during our reserved use of the facility to have a buzz-in system, much like City Hall is currently, to get in the offices, to get into the main level, if they're there to do business with the Parks Department. And also add a bubbler into the main hall room, which would alleviate kids having to kind of go out to the main atrium, which would still have public access. So people coming in for senior center programs would be able to come into the first part of the building, use the elevator to get down to the senior center, use the bubbler that's there, they have business to do with the park market, it's get buzzed in.
Same projects?
I just would say that we had a bit of a discussion at Parks Board about this concern about limiting public access to the community center, to being required, being buzzed, buzzed in. So I think we can just kind of see what the details are and whether there might be other ways to improve the security for the childcare work without making it the front door, making the front door inaccessible, without, you know, getting buzzed in.
Other Thomas?
Would someone, if there's a scenery event in there, they need to park out in front and they could take the elevator, can they get in to the opening to take the elevator?
Correct, yes.
So that would be accessible?
Absolutely. Yep, the elevator is still be accessible and this would only be during program time. So from the 2:40 to 6:00 PM during the school year and the days off the school program that we have and then during the summer when we're...
Because that would be the primary concern is if you wanted seniors to want it to get downstairs because there's limited parking during the daytime, they could park in front, they could take the elevator and go down.
Yeah.
So you're not limiting access to the community center, just the upper level?
That's correct.
I think part of the concern was that's where kind of the information desk or window is. So if people are signing up for different things and so there's a lot of...
Could you open? It would cost money. Could you create an opening?
So we talked about a lot of different options and I think that's what Doug was alluding to, is seeing how it all plays out because we could maybe punch a hole in that wall so you have a little welcome window at that point in that little vestibule. I think there's a lot of options that could be...
Could you buzz the staff? Could you buzz the staff, the rec staff, I mean, from outside the door? You could buzz and say who you are to let yourself in, like you do at, like at the school district when you walk in, in the school district office.
Correct.
You buzz and you announce who you are.
Yep, that's the same, it's the same principle that we're recommending. So you'd be buzzed in, there would be a camera to say, hello, you know, I'm going to help you, here's Sam or whatever, yep, come on in.
So people arriving for programs would have to do that, too?
Yeah, I mean, at arrival times, we would, you know, just make sure we have a staff out there because that's a five-minute period of when people are coming.
Right.
If you, yeah, you could have a screen up there that would announce, you know, a notice to say for access, please do X, Y.
Yeah. I guess my, well, it seems like an unintended consequence, or at least one we didn't anticipate, of having the childcare and the school, the day camp in the summer in the building when we approved it, that we were going to need to limit public access to what is, after all, called the community center.
Any additional, Alder Crook?
I do think that in the state, Dane County, people are kind of accustomed to having security measures when we're entering buildings regardless of the technicality of it.
Well, there are lots of things. You could create, I mean, it costs money, but you could put a wall up and have one door that would open to the offices. Anyway, we could, you could talk about, there are lots of options that you could do.
Second project is just to upgrade the women's bathroom. So when we had some unexpected repairs in the men's bathroom, we were able to redo the whole bathroom. And at the same time, it's also going to be partitions of the women's bathroom. So this project is just to replace the countertop and the sink in the women's bathroom and do some additional lighting so it kind of mimics what we have in the men's bathroom. Easier maintenance overall and better lighting.
I know there's two items that were removed.
Sure, I'll just continue to beat the same drum. The, I think the loading duff design piece is something that would be especially helpful for the council to see the information you provided, you know, to the Parks Board. And if anybody wanted to pretty much see it, you'd walk over there. And it's really, really bad. I mean, there's access through that area for trash or, I don't know, all sorts of places. Like, it's, you have to go to three different levels and...
So my comment on the community center, it will be the same comment that I think I've echoed many times. You're telling us that we're going to be there for another 15 years and we should look at a substantial remodeling project renovation. If it's going to be six years, eight years, we can make do with a lot of things. But if it's going to be 15 years, then we should definitely look at investments in not only this one particular project, but the building overall. We've got, you know, it's an aging building, we've got critters that come into the building, we've got poor energy efficiency with the windows. We've had changing dynamics in the use, we've had changing populations that utilize the building. So my encouragement, my recommendation is to finalize this facility schedule this year, which will help us plan as staff on what we consider to be immediate improvements to the facilities that we are in, you know, 300-plus days a year for eight-plus hours a day. So we already have intimate, you know, knowledge of these buildings, we are in them every day, we're trying to make the best use out of them and give you guys the best recommendations we can for improvements, both in the short term and the long term.
Additional questions about the community center? All right, moving on to the pool.
Page 124, looks like coming back in. Up toward pool, page 123. First project that was, priority project was replacing the locker room floor. Since you've made a call, this one was transferred over for a different project, I believe, last year. That was on the capital budget. Floors in the locker room, a lot of use and abuse, and quite slippery and wet. So this would be to get down to bare concrete, then put in epoxy material, a slippery distance on it. Second project is maintenance replacement of our mechanical door where our pumps are located. It's rusting out and difficult to keep open or shut. Third project is pump, cool pump repair replacement. This is a placeholder we put in if and when our main pool pump fails during the season or we have to replace some of our smaller pumps. So we go through the winterization process each year. We have seven pumps within our system that are all required to make the pool run. And when we get to that point of startup, if one of them does not function or, you know, repairs, we have to replace. The good thing with this line item is a few years ago, we had to buy a whole new main pool pump. And so what we have then is, we have two. We have one that's like rebuilt as our backup. And so if it does go bad, we can swap it out within an hour and still be up and running. Whereas before, it would be, we could be down for a week or more. But this is a placeholder in case we do have to make any replacements on it. And then the last one is replacement, scheduled replacement of deck furniture. And that, we've had a combination of the kind of lounge chairs and the recycled plastic head around the chairs.
Alder Wood? Just, any questions about the pool? All right, see you. Thanks, Jake. Anything additional? Mark to close up?
Yeah, I'm sure just Mary went and talked about the, you know, the number one priority is, what you've been saying is public safety coming. That's one of the things, you know, a lot of the stuff we're basing on, doing a public safety building, keeping that cost down. So we'll be talking about it the next meeting. That is, one thing I'd rather mention at the start is, you know, public safety, I guess, over here on the...
You said we'll be talking about that at the next meeting?
I know, but Mary, talk a little bit more in depth if Mary's being here. There actually is in one of the, one of the items, placeholder. If you look at, we don't have a dollar note, but if you look at buildings, there's a placeholder for the way of public safety. Should be determined.
Questions or comments for Mark? Seeing none, is there a question to adjourn?
No to adjourn.
Is there a second? If all is in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, nay. All right, here is the bin.